Today is June 10th, 2013. It is 6:03, which is my fault. And we are at our first monthly meeting of the Brattleboro Planning Commission. First order is to approve the minutes of May 29th.
So, James, from my understanding, the monthly meetings begin in July?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, so we still have one more?
This is, but also this is technically still the first month.
Meeting of the month.
Yes, that's what I meant, of course.
Of course it is.
Yeah. You just misunderstood me.
That's right.
Anywho.
I would just like to change one typo in this meeting minutes that changes Mr. McLaughlin to Ms. McLaughlin.
Where is that?
A meeting called to order.
Oh, it's my fault, I'm sorry.
You must have been so assertive on recording.
I did the, I did the first part of it.
It was the way you were beating your fist on the table.
You did half of it, I did that.
Just like Chris Jeff.
Right. We didn't take your shoe off, I hope, but anyhow. Are there any other issues with the minutes? Well, we ought to entertain a motion, I suppose.
I moved the minutes from the last meeting into...
Okay, second?
I'll second that.
No discussion, right? Any discussion on the minutes, Timberly? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that's a five-nothing pass. Announcements. Anything for staff?
Uh, no.
Please pend over the hearing on mobile food units for the 24th, and that's going to start at 7:15.
Yeah.
Chris Campini will be here first.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's the announcement.
I announced Chris's arrival at the next, at the meeting of June 24th of the last meeting, so.
Okay. And, uh, let's see. I suppose in the announcements, I ought to mention our open slot, huh, for the viewers at home? Or should I not?
Sure.
We recently had a resignation from the Planning Commission, and we are looking for people at home, if you're out there, who are interested in zoning and planning and design, to help us try to write effective law and try to plan the future of Brattleboro and with what influence we have. So, if you're out there and you're interested in what you're watching on TV, send your application to...
Select Board is going to...
You send it to the...
There's an online application.
Yeah.
The town manager's office.
Right.
So you can go online and...
If there's anybody out there who doesn't have a computer, is there anything they can do?
Yeah, they can go to the library, or they can visit the office.
Or you can stop at the town manager's office, they have a pile of applications there.
Okay.
I'm not sure there actually is an opening.
There's not?
Well, technically there is.
There were two. You re-upped, and then there was an opening.
Yeah.
And we received an application from somebody in the public, and then Carolina is going to re-up.
I didn't get my application in in time, and there were two seats open.
So I guess technically it's still open.
And two seats.
In a very technical sense.
Okay.
Technicality, so I got mine in, but it's...
But we're sorted out with Gary's seat?
Yes, that would...
That would be the one. I think that whomever they appoint next will be taking Gary's seat.
Right.
Oh, okay.
He's the resignation.
I won't be full term.
So you and Carolina were expiring?
Right.
Your terms were expired.
Yeah, sorry.
So Gary...
No, that's fine.
Were you reappointed? I don't even know.
I actually don't know, but we, there's no need to dwell on this.
Right.
Or maybe an opening.
Um, public comment. We have a one-man public tonight. Does that man have comment? Okay. WE90 Technology Drive LLC.
Let me take you through this very briefly.
Really nicely written letter.
Yes. Actually, it's a good letter. The letter, for the most part, is self-explanatory. The process that we're involved with this application is that a renewable energy project that is solar of this size requires Public Service Board Certificate of Public Good, and that's under Section 248 of state statute. And so what, this is laid out in, very briefly but effectively, in the cover letter. The project is being developed under the Vermont Sustainably Priced Energy Enterprise Development Standard Offer Program. The way this works is that the project plan is submitted, as you see it here, with additional documentation to the Public Service Board. When the project is 10 megawatts or less, it's eligible to be considered under what they call, the state calls it Standard Offer Program, where there's a fixed price to buy the energy generated at the site. And for our interests, town doesn't have party status necessarily before Act 248 hearings conducted by the Public Service Board, but the town plan and municipal comment can be taken under consideration by the Public Service Board. So what we need to do is to review the application briefly and establish whether it does meet the intent and specific requirements of the town plan that was recently adopted, and whether, in fact, we would advise the select board to frame remarks to be considered by the Public Service Board in the instance of it being reviewed by the Public Service Board.
They're also asking us to waive the 45-day notice, so applicants need to give a 45-day notice before they can submit, and they would like us to waive that.
Right. And so that obviously adds time to the, you know, to the, for the applicant, this extends a period of time where they're not certain what the outcome is.
This is between exits two and three, right? That's where this is, basically going north right after the...
It's immediately south of the Holiday Inn in an open field, and you see that as you're heading north on I-91.
And they're going to use the roadway to...
Yep.
So obviously, the general precepts of our plan would support it. Is there anything in our Putney Road specific chapter where we discussed potential residential housing in the future that would conflict with it, you think?
Residential wasn't...
Yeah.
Supposed to be located there.
Yeah, it was south of...
The southern area in the...
Yeah.
Yeah, south of...
The Ohio Plateau.
Here.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Just making sure.
Yeah.
Pretty lousy to live that close to the highway, anyway. Is there anything else that's potentially conflicting with the plan?
Is there a brook or something nearby?
Nope.
Not there.
It's way north of that.
Further north.
Close to the roundabout.
Yeah.
Well, I'll be visible from the highway, then.
They said that it's, yeah, they said it's going to be visible around 15 seconds and more, looking to the side.
There's a burn here that people proceeding have to figure, so that's a burn.
And they're going to be directed away from the highway, so it won't create glare.
How does...
Right.
They did say that? Yes. Is this a public, I mean, who, what kind of company is this that's doing this? Is it some local people?
The property, the land is owned by an LLC called WE90 Technology Drive.
We're all sound that, but...
And that's owned by...
Wind Stanley?
Wind Stanley Enterprises.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what the structure, if any, is concerning the ownership of the proposed solar array, and I don't believe that that's germane to our deliberations, so...
I'll just ask, because I know that a lot of, of the public has been concerned around, say, wind in particular, of other big energy projects that are owned by outside big companies and people kind of, that strikes a chord with some people, but there's a lot of this community solar happening now in Putney, which is very exciting, and I talked to the guy at the, at the Energy Fair, at the Heifer Stroll thing, and he talked about more and more of that's going to be coming. So, it's very exciting.
Anybody else want to weigh in on this? I think it seems pretty difficult to say that it's contrary to anything in the town plan.
Yeah, I went through the town plan, and I didn't say anything that was contrary. I think that...
In favor, it looks like a well-thought-out plan and consistent with the town plan.
We ought to, I think, move to waive the notice.
Do they have to, um, there's something here about the aesthetic input and having to determine whether the project will have an adverse effect. I mean, is that in the process still, or is that already been, I didn't quite...
They'll take that up in the hearings. I mean, I think they, their paperwork is saying we don't have an adverse effect using the Queche test.
Right. And I think that...
It is something that, you know, the town felt strongly about.
Right.
We could put that in a letter or better.
They seem to have examined the town plan to identify where the plan identified seed areas.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Anybody want to make a motion to waive this 45-day waiver?
I'd make a motion to waive...
To allow it, or to waive the, do you waive the waiver?
To waive the 45-day notice requirement in 30 VSA Section 248-F.
My second.
Okay, I guess I can make the motion. So I, that's, sorry, let me start over.
Mr. McLaughlin, aren't you?
Yeah. I, I move to waive the 45-day advance notice period pursuant to 30 VSA 248-F.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
So waiving it creates what, again?
Means they can get to the further boards quicker.
Yeah, they can see that.
Right.
And that we're not raising some kind of argument that this is contrary to town plan.
Well, we still could.
We still could.
When it gets into that process.
Right.
We're not, like, completely waiving that.
All we're doing is waiving the, you know, the warning period, basically, where they would have to give notice that they propose to go to the Public Service Board with a project that fits this description. And so typically, what would happen is that you would have advertisements in the newspaper and so forth, and that it would be, 45 days would have to elapse before that they could then be heard by the Public Service Board, and they're seeking a waiver for that requirement.
Yeah.
And they're seeking it not only from us, but from the select board and the Windham Regional Commission.
Right.
Yeah. I don't personally have any problem with it, I just, are we shortchanging a process? And, I mean, we're cutting that period out for them so they can get moving quicker, but would we be putting ourselves in a, any kind of, like, position because of this, or, funny isn't right, but, you know?
I can't, I mean, I don't know, you know, unless you wanted a presentation, unless you felt you needed more time to gather more information, I don't, I don't think that we're shortchanging.
We, we all agree with, you know, having solar by the side of the highway, but does this give anyone else the opportunity to still, I mean, they can still...
So we're not stopping public input by doing all that?
Yeah, that's, thank you, that's...
They just have to waste time.
Right. It's just the time elapsing. So if you, the second last paragraph on their letter, about midway through, "We respectfully ask that you waive the 45-day notice period allowing us to submit the Public Service Board petition by early to mid-June. This waiver would in no way impact your ability to comment on the project or to participate in the Section 248 process, should you so desire. The waiver of the 45-day notice simply allows us to submit the petition to the Public Service Board sooner, so that we can begin the regulatory process and work towards a late fall construction timeframe. If you agree to waive the 45-day notice period, kindly please execute the attached waiver." So...
Thank you. As I read it, I was ahead of time on the...
I believe that's a fair summary of the, of the steps.
Apologies, though.
That's right.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing, oh, sorry. All right, hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so then I will sign this.
Here, I'll give you one as soon.
Okay. Do you want to get started on the mobile food vendors memo, Rod and/or Sue?
Yeah, let me start. Okay, so, last time you remember, we discussed this for quite a while, and the outcome of that meeting was that there'd be further research done by staff, according to this Staff would, one, review item number 3A and provide alternative language regarding parking; two, include restaurants as a permitted use in industrial districts; and, three, provide an explanation for commissioners regarding the review for accessory uses per parcel. Other clarifying language could be added based on meeting discussion. Hours of operation will not be included. So, I've circulated the memo, it's two pages, I just circulated it tonight, and then Sue also has a copy of the...
What was warned.
What was warned. So we'll get to the significance of that later, but let me just take you through the memo, and hopefully I'll give you enough time to, to review it while we've got it before you. So, one of the concerns was that the language that we had developed earlier was not accurate or not, not clear enough in terms of the implications of where the mobile food unit would be located and the people accessing that food unit relative to other uses on the site. So, you'll see at the top of, under the alternative parking language, you'll see the suggested text from the last time, and then you'll see proposed text that we're suggesting this time, and the highlighted and underlined part is different from the, that's the only difference. So we're adding in this text. So now, we were proposing that it would now read, "The food cart or mobile food unit and any associated temporary site furniture may be located within existing parking areas provided it, (a) does not interfere with pedestrian or vehicular access to parking spaces," and here's the part that we've added in for clarification, "associated with the principal use; and (b) does not create a visibility obstruction to moving vehicles within the parking lot." So that's the first item. The second item that was raised that was of concern was how to treat accessory uses on a parcel. And under the zoning ordinance, we can think of, you know, there, it is framed, accessory is framed in at least two ways, use or structure. Because they have to be roadworthy motor vehicles of some kind, they don't qualify as a structure. So then the question is whether they should be dealt with as an accessory use or not. An example of an accessory structure is something like garage, an application for a garage on a residential lot where a house already exists. It's accessory to the primary use, and it's a customary thing for people in that situation to request. So it's fairly customary for homeowners to apply to have a garage or a carport added to their parcel, and it's accessory to their major use, which is the home. An accessory use example would be something a little bit odder, and that is where you have a primary use, such as retail, and then another use would like, the applicant would like to incorporate another use into that existing use, which may be in one structure. And so an example of that might be something such as a supermarket seeking a permit to allow for an accessory use inside the supermarket for a bank branch or something similar, right?
Or even ATM in the retail shopping plaza, we've had that.
Yep. Right. And, you know, depending on the way, the way a retail space is configured, it might be, you know, there's various ways in which it breaks out, but that, that would be a more, so that's a typical one. So, um, so then the question becomes, well, in light of that, how do we want to treat applications for multiple mobile, mobile food units? And the key thing here is, we don't think you could consider the application for a permit for a mobile food unit to be customarily incidental, say, in the way of a carport or a garage in a residential setting, or, or, you know, combinations of retail activity so forth, for instance, in the accessory use terms. So we looked at other sections of the ordinance. Section 2311 came to mind, and that section of the ordinance allows for multiple buildings and multiple uses on a lot. All of the zoning districts that we're thinking about, that would be eligible for a mobile food unit permit application, are covered by Section 2311A. So what we would do is rely on that section to guide the zoning administrator and the development review board, should they receive an application for more than one mobile food unit. While we, when we did the initial research for this, including last time, what we did was actually go online and look at how other communities have addressed the issue. We found that, in general, we simplified a lot of the requirements and made them less onerous. Raleigh, North Carolina seemed to us to be, feel a good guide. And they had a, basically a table that showed how many mobile food units they would be willing to permit according to the size of the parcel. So we're suggesting something along these lines. Mobile food units shall only be located on a, pardon me, on a lot containing a principal building or use, and the maximum number shall be total parcel area less than an acre, one; total parcel area greater than an acre would be two. The key point in this language is that we're identifying the need to have an established principal use as part of the permit application. So to be clear about that, there would need to be a building with an active use, or it could be a parking lot. A vacant lot does not have a primary use. It exists in a zoning district, but if it's a vacant lot, it doesn't have a primary use. Under those circumstances, if the owner of a vacant lot wanted to obtain a permit for a mobile food unit, they would use the regular process of applying, you know, under a site plan review, which would be reviewed by the DIB, not the zoning administrator.
Does that include a vacant structure?
I would say no, because the vacant structure probably has had site plan review done at some point, and so the parking and the access and stormwater and kind of...
All those things have been dealt with.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah, the onsite circulation's probably established.
So what we're looking for there is if it's, if it's, imagine a completely blank lot, vacant lot, that's got blacktop for the most of it, and then the outlines of a foundation for where a structure was once, and some basic fencing, and it's in typical condition for a vacant lot. In other words, there's no landscaping...
Weeds growing through the cracks.
Weeds growing through the cracks, poor surface, which could be a trip hazard, a series of, a series of issues for use in this context, and then no marked out, no striping for parking areas, no striping for, you know, specific parking spaces or where pedestrians should walk or not walk, and so on and so forth. And because it's a vacant lot, there's less of, the assumption that the property owner is going to be present and active in the permitting process is also less easy to sustain. So under those circumstances, what we'd say is, we'd want to establish those kinds of things by actually doing a site plan review. So it doesn't say no, it just says the threshold would be a little more rigorous, because we'd want to establish those things that we already know about another site where there is already a principal use.
For public safety.
So think of it... Yeah. So think of a different site where there's an active use, somewhat oversized parking lot that's in reasonably good condition and access to it is, is well-controlled, and the parking bays are striped, and there is an active property owner that could be held accountable if there was, you know, a liability issue or a violation issue. So, um, so that's why we're making that important point concerning principal use and distinguishing that from a vacant lot. And then, in working over these issues, we also became aware that there's already a section in the zoning ordinance that addresses food vending vehicle signs. And so, we'd, we'd suggest and recommend that, as at the end of the public hearing, that the text of the draft regulations to be forwarded to the select board simply indicate that the section that already exists, 4522F, in the zoning ordinance addressing food vending vehicle signs, be the one that's referenced in this section.
Would that take out?
Yeah.
What was in there?
Yeah, we would end up deleting that.
And I think this one's actually more permissive, the one that exists right now.
Yeah, it's significantly more permissive.
Would it be useful to have that? I mean, it's not that big, just have that replaced, I mean, reference it, but have it actually there in writing, so if somebody came to get their permit, it would all be, like, make it easier for them rather than to have them go look it all up. I mean, that would help me if I was doing that.
Well, like, we didn't find it.
Yeah, right, we didn't, yeah, that's right, we didn't find it. So, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we could do something like that. All right.
Can I open up a food cart?
What?
Can I open up a food cart?
Oh, yeah. In my backyard, with the deck over the brook. That would be very useful.
So I missed, obviously, the last meeting where there was some debate about how to proceed here. In light of this memo, does anybody have concerns with how the staff has addressed the board's concerns from the last meeting? And keep in mind, that's a fairly ignorant question, so...
Well, the rest of it is in that, right? In that...
What got warned?
This is, this is what got warned.
Here, we didn't pass that on.
So...
Mostly what we thought back to it.
So this is, this is changes to this? Effectively, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the...
At the end of the public hearing.
Public hearing, this is what we're proposing.
Agreed, making these changes.
Right.
Yeah, this is...
You're right.
I agree, yeah.
Okay.
So where does the...
So let's get back to the alternative parking language.
Yeah, where does that?
That would be...
An addition.
That would be an addition under, see, item 3A.
Oh, right, okay, yes.
Okay. And then, the next, the next item is accessory uses on a parcel, and this simply clarifies how this would apply. It's not suggesting, um, a different take, but what we would do is include, if you turn over the page, the second page of the memo, where the third paragraph down starts with, "Mobile food units shall only be located on a lot containing a principal building." That, and the, and the tape, and the chart would be inserted.
At what point?
I think that would...
I would almost put it right up top.
Right.
So in all districts where restaurants are permitted, food carts and mobile food units located on private property shall obtain a zoning permit. And then it would go on to say, yeah, "Mobile food units shall only be located on a lot containing a principal building or use, and the maximum number shall be..."
Okay, so let's go piece by piece. Does the change to the parking language mollify the concerns of whomever had concerns with that?
Kind of sounds the same, doesn't it?
I take it that this was your...
Yeah. And I guess when, one particular instance I would think of is out on Putney Road type of place where all of the parking is associated with the principal use, right?
Yeah, I mean, I hear what your concern is, but we know that there's excessive parking, and so, I mean, when we talked about it, it's kind of like, okay, you can think of some sites where parking... some sites where parking is really tight on that site, and if you were to take up any of those spaces, it would really affect site circulation and their ability to...
Isn't that the owner's choice, if he wants to give up parking spots, assuming it doesn't mess with vehicular access?
Well, not if the parking was specified in a site plan review.
Right. So take, let me, let me, yeah, because we discussed this against each other, so let me take two hypothetical slides.
Can I speak just something, just before this? Would it be a fair compromise if we changed "associated" to "essential" to the principal use?
It's not essential to the principal use, it's part, I mean, it's associated with the principal use because it's defined in the permit in the site plan review.
Well, then how would we solve the America's best hypothetical?
Let me get to that.
Okay.
We're gonna try and not use addresses and business names, too. So, okay, so here you go, you've got a, a, this is site A. And in this instance, there's a store and a repair shop. And a covered area with gas pumps, right? So there's four gas pumps. And there's a, there's an, there's two points of access, basically one in and one out in each direction, so that people can access the, the gas pumps, that they can move vehicle, one vehicle in and out of a repair shop. You can pay for your gas and so forth. And then, somebody comes along and they want to put a food cart in this corner over here. If the issue is that, under the site plan, the minimum number of parking spaces they needed to provide was, and there was, and there was two parking spaces here, so they were likely buying two parking spaces, right? So if they, if they permit call for six spaces, right, on the basis of the square footage of the, of the store and the repair shop, and the, the table of, of requirements that we have in the existing zoning ordinance. So to get their permit, they needed to show six spaces, right? And then they're asking for a mobile vending unit here, occupying three of those spaces, and not even taking into account where a customer may park for this, or where the pedestrians may sit, and so on and so forth. And it's so close to one of the openings, that it's got a potential conflict with pedestrians and customers standing here, and vehicular traffic moving on out. So theoretically, under my, under my kind of conception, this would be a no. Right? The zoning administrator would say, no, you can't do it, it's too tight. On the other hand, you've got site B. And you've got this area at the front that's got a capacity of 20-plus parking spaces, then you've got a large building, and the primary use is, say, a motel, and then there's another 30 parking spaces out here, and that's enough for each one of the modules of the motel. And for the most part, these are vacant, and there's very little overflow parking requirements or some such. So under these circumstances, they're asking for a mobile food unit in the corner, and they're gonna designate an area that would allow for seating with an umbrella and trash, and somewhere for the customers to stand and even park their cars while they're doing this, and then all this is uninterferable, and it's still more than enough. This would be a yes. Right?
I'm, I'm, oh, sorry.
So, the key point is, by doing the review this way, I think that if, in the, so even in the, even from a process standpoint, say this person was really seeking this mobile food unit here, then what they need to do is come back and ask for an amendment to their site plan to reduce the minimum number of parking spaces, so they're still before the D I B., right? This person is pretty clear from the beginning, this property owner has got more than enough space, and the potential conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians and others, and customers of the food, mobile food unit, and customers or visitors to the primary use on the parcel, don't constitute a significant conflict. So this one, so the way it's written and framed is, this should become immediately obvious to the zoning administrator, and there are mechanisms in place to put a brake on that, and this is also immediately obvious to the zoning administrator, and there's no need to pursue it any further.
I understand that being the result we want, but if you wanted to read this in a very conservative way, couldn't you say, well, those spaces are associated with the principal use, the front spaces of the hypothetical motel?
Why don't we use the language that you just said, which is that the parking spaces don't constitute, you know, usurping these parking spaces don't constitute a significant conflict with the principal use? As opposed to associated with?
Right. So what would the, what would the whole thing read, please?
It's not interfere with pedestrian or vehicular access to parking spaces, and does not constitute a significant conflict with the principal, with the park, let me think about that. Instead of saying, "Does not interfere with pedestrian access or vehicular access," and "does not constitute a significant conflict to the parking spaces associated with the principal use."
Can I say two things about what's on the board?
Yep.
So, in looking at site A and site B...
Here's what I would suggest, adding "does not constitute a significant conflict."
Would it be somewhat fair to say that, in a, in a situation like site A, whoever owns that, it's in their best interest to leave as many parking spaces as possible? I mean, if I own that spot, and, and this guy's like, hey, will you take up first parking spot? He'll be like, no, go in the corner, people can walk over to you, or whatever, it's not like a drive-through. You know what I mean? So I, I, I just feel like it's, it's something, that problem isn't necessarily...
The key is trying to figure out whether the plan would likely lead to conflict, and the issue there would be, in a tight, on a tight lot, of which there are several, in the older, particularly in the older parts of town, like the Canal Street area, contrast Canal Street with Putney Road, and you get much smaller parcels with commercial use, and you get...
They're not as deep.
Yeah, and you get poorly configured access as it is. So if you look at the interaction between traffic on Canal Street and Fairview, where there's, there's the, so it's, on one boundary, there's the back of the Price Chopper Plaza, where Brugers and so forth is, and then there's a very wide opening there, and then there's no control for people entering the, the drive-through line for Dunkin' Donuts, which itself is wrapped around a gas station, and that's, the traffic for Dunkin' Donuts is not separated from the traffic from the gas station, and that's on a corner that's got a very difficult left-hand turn, and then it's next to the entry point for the drive-through of the bank that's next to the gas station, that then feeds into the parking lot that is the parking lot, Price Chopper...
There's a cut-through lot.
With, there's a cut-through lot for people trying to access the high school, and not make, and not getting stuck behind the left-hand turning vehicle, leaving Fairview, and so on and so forth, right? So, the point being, that, first of all, the property owner's not in the best, not always the best person to identify and understand the, the potential conflicts and risks, number one. Number two, our concerns and our measurements are different from theirs. We're protecting the traveling public, customers of the new proposed use, customers of the existing use, pedestrians, and abudders, and they all have rights in the process. And then the last part is, if they obtained a site plan that specified a particular configuration of parking spaces, and then they're asking to modify it, then the zoning administrator is obligated to look at that proposed modification and see if it conflicts with the minimum number of parking spaces that they had to provide. Now, in instance of the hypothetical site B thing, we think it's regrettable, we've not rewritten the zoning ordinance, the minimum requirement for parking spaces or the minimum sort of expectations that prevailed in the 60s and 70s for the minimum number of parking spaces was really generous. And so if we were to rewrite that zoning ordinance, we wouldn't insist on or require so much parking space. And so it's a recognition that we think that's not the best use of the land to be devoted to empty parking spaces, and we think that that's true of many of the much deeper, bigger parcels on Putney Road. But we want to be able to preserve the site-by-site review of the zoning administrator precisely because of what's present in the first example. And it's not up to, what I'd say, it's not up to the applicant or the owner to determine what is safe and, and reasonable, it's up to the zoning administrator, because there's, there's obligations that fall upon them that are different from the applicant or the property owner.
And the owner might be absentee.
It could be anything, you know?
And many times are, in a lot of these places.
Not paying attention to the safety concern.
Right. I mean, it's a pretty fundamental conflict, that we don't feel is appropriate for the applicant, you know, we don't necessarily think that the applicant or the property owner's understanding of their own best interests, like, you know, necessarily lead to the best site, you know, the best proposed site plan.
Um, I, so, I guess the whole point of a mobile food cart is that it's mobile, so therefore you can move it around a site. I mean, the site plan approval, all right, you know, I, I get that part, but, you know, again, in this situation, why couldn't the food cart just be in the corner? Because it's going to bring more cars in, it's not like a drive-through. The Canal Street example is, it's for permanent planning, whereas, I just, I, it seems like the, the main concern we have here is actually, it's access, it's access of people moving in and around the site, it's not necessarily parking spaces.
Well, in general, I think it's safety, and I think there's a conflict between, you know, the vendors want to, want to have site access, that people driving by can see them. So that might necessarily, it might conflict with the overall review of the safety of the parking lot and its functioning, and he might be able to convince the property owner that this is the best location for him, but...
Or her.
Or her. But... Or both.
Or both.
But it may not be the safest thing from the zoning administrator's view for the public, and so that, that's what we're trying to protect.
See, and all those considerations are in play when somebody seeks a permit to locate a mobile food unit on public property. That's precisely what gets reviewed. And so, right now...
It's our own place.
Yeah. Right now, we're in a setting where, if you can put it on private land, we don't have any requirements in the zoning ordinance at all. And then the other part about it is, I think in more populous communities that are actually more restrictive in terms of the way they operate the zoning ordinance, so for instance, in Raleigh, North Carolina, it's a requirement that you drive the vehicle away...
At night.
At, once the business is shut, that it has to be moved, that it can't stay there overnight. And personally, I prefer that. I would prefer to have a requirement that the operator of the mobile food unit remove it from the site when they're not operating it. But it just so happens that here, and it's not just Brattleboro, but it, you know, it's part of the world, it's not uncommon for seasonal things to develop. So, you know, the truck, the truck at the mobiles at exit three is there a lot of the time, you know, they shut it and drive away in another car, they don't, they don't drive the vehicle away. That's true of the one, others on Putney Road, it's certainly true of the one at exit one. So it's frequently the case here that people will bring them out in summer or spring, and then leave them semi-permanently in one location until the season ends, and they might, they may move them away for, for winter or whatever, they may take them away, you know, to Bike Weekend in New Hampshire or something, I mean, they might have reasons to move it around, but for the most part, they don't drive it off every night. And so I actually think there are reasons why that's preferred. But, for whatever reason, we think that that, you know, we're, we've relaxed that requirement.
So I think that, I was reviewing, to your point, I was reviewing the minutes from last week meeting, last week's meeting, and under the zoning rule of food vendors, number eight, or section F, I mean, I think it's about the third paragraph, they say, "The issue is that there are semi-permanent locations operating day-to-day." And I agree that we do need to have appropriate regulations that may or may not match what we had for these semi-permanent locations. I would like to think about, I would like to, I'm not sure if I want to say propose at this point, but I think we as a group should think about different sets of regulations, one being, people that operate, say, 30 days or less, and close up and drive their thing away, drive their vehicle away, drive their unit away, so it never stays overnight, so 30 days or less operating per year, per calendar year, and the vehicle has to be removed at the end of, at the end of business, there's a set of rules that's more lax. And those that are semi-permanent, which we can define as other than, you know, more than 30 days of doing business, period. And that will allow for the increased entrepreneurship, the great things that go along with testing and trial, and interesting things that can't happen by all the different restrictions that require something of something that's permanent or semi-permanent. So to have two different sets of...
Can I just clarify, like, you threw out as the first one, it would be 30 days or less, and they pull it away?
And they pull it away at the end of business, every day they do business.
Thirty days isn't very much.
No.
I know, that's the point. The things that...
More like, so you're thinking more of the pop-up, like...
The pop-up, exactly. Which, and those, and then, and even, if those people are successful, they're gonna go, hey, I want to be in Brattleboro more, then, yeah, then they go through the bigger process.
Well, I still think we need to protect some toddler from being run over in a pop-up.
I'm not saying we shouldn't have any regulation for them, but we should make it, you know, so we keep number three.
I just don't think that these are so onerous that any, anybody could live with them, they just seem normal and sensible.
I disagree, because it's impossible to set up something on a relatively quick trial basis with, I gotta plan at least four weeks ahead to even begin doing this. And that is exactly the opposite of what entrepreneurship that we talk about wanting in this town allows for.
But if I'm an entrepreneur and planning something, I'm gonna take more than a month, I mean, it's gonna be in the brewing process and the planning for more than a month anyway.
So you already own a food cart that you take to all these different places, and one day you go, you know what, I've heard Brattleboro's a pretty cool place to be, I'm gonna run my truck down there and hang out for a weekend, and hang out for Saturday.
And you get a permit and you go to the farmer's market?
No, 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 Carolina asked the question. If you already have all that infrastructure in place, you have thought about this for years, this is not, I'm gonna open up a new business in Brattleboro, these are people that have mobile trucks that go all over the place with them. It's exactly the point, is for them to be able to move around and not be doing all this.
Sort of test out the...
Yeah, and then if it works.
So it's, it's more like, it's more like the ones that, right now, are probably come in for the stroll or come in for the Fourth of July, and I agree, right now...
I agree, this guy up on Putney Road, yeah, it's a weird situation he's got up there. Is that a vacant lot? By the way, that, the, the one that's, what does he do? He does like, he does some sort of interesting food, you know, I'm talking about across from TD Bank?
Yeah.
So that's not, that's not a vacant lot, I was wondering about that.
No, no.
No.
No, I think what you're talking about is a whole different kind of thing, I think.
I am?
Yeah.
Because, because what we've been talking about is semi-permanent locations, and I agree, if something's gonna be semi-permanent, then we need to have more control than the pop-up.
And the semi-permanent affects two, two different land kind of ownership, and that's the thing, that one is on public or town land, and one is on private, and what we're trying to do is, in those kind of businesses that are more semi-permanent, level the playing field for what the requirements are for everybody, so that the same, and that's what, my understanding of what this is doing. And I can see your point, and maybe there's a third thing we need to add here, I don't know, do we want to do that? That's a whole, to me, that's a whole other conversation, but I think the semi-permanents, whether they're on private property or on town property, need to have kind of a, a level playing, but that would, I mean, otherwise...
I mean, I... Can we review what the select board has asked us to do? On one hand... Can we review what the select board has asked us to do, on one hand, and secondly, what, what an applicant would need to do under these proposed regulations?
I think the, the first point I should offer is, for the zoning administrator, the zoning administrator has up to thirty days to issue a permit. And can, you know, refuse a permit and then the applicant, with cause, and then the applicant's recourse is to appeal that decision of the zoning administrator to the development review board. In practice, with minor applications, the zoning administrator typically doesn't take thirty days to issue a permit. That being said, it's unlikely that, you know, you could call from your truck on your cellphone on Wednesday morning and then have a permit by Wednesday afternoon, I mean, it just seems that that's not realistic either on the other end. But I would say somewhere in the period of, you know, two to three weeks, you know, the vast majority of minor administratively-approved permit applications get addressed within the two to three week period. Right? Um, I hear what you're saying about facilitating the whole pop-up thing, I don't, you know, I don't have a, an objection to that notion. I guess what I'm saying is, um, you know, it may be that we're stretching this, I, I think what we're doing is addressing the most common practices that we see right now, which are the ones that are, for want of a better term, kind of seasonal. There's, the, the select board has reviewed chapter eleven with regard to, um, requests for mobile food units on public land. And, um, under those circumstances, the operator of a mobile food unit doesn't require a zoning permit. And then the large-scale events that we can think of, such as, um, this weekend, this past weekend with the strolling of the heifers, or the July fourth weekend, or something similar, um, what you generally find is that there's a structure already in place to deal with it, so that in the instance of strolling of the heifers, it's the organization that takes out the primary permit. And they take on the responsibility of coordinating various aspects of it. And, um, included in that is insurance for all the stall holders, um, compliance with fire code requirements concerning, um, use of generators and, um, extension cords for power and a variety of other issues associated with the use of electricity. And then lastly, when it involves the selling of food, health department permits. So even in the instance that you just cited, we don't issue health department permits? And I would need to check with the state, but I seriously doubt whether you'd get a health permit to operate a mobile food unit, um, in Brattleboro, if you, say you've come from interstate, say you've moved, say you've left Keene and you think that you're gonna operate this weekend here, I don't see you getting a health permit within twenty-eight days. So there are just...
And that's a state thing?
Yep.
Okay.
And there's nothing, you know...
So one of the rules we put in is that it has to be...
It's already there.
It's already there.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying we would have, right, but if we had a different set of rules for those that are thirty days or less, always drive away, that would be one of the rules that's in place.
I, when I heard you talk about that, it reminded me of temporary signs, because this time of year, you know, car shows are coming in, and we actually do get calls from the people putting it on outside saying, what are your sign requirements? And they do, I don't know if sign permits are like thirty-five dollars, but there are regulations and, you know, you can apply every six months for a total of twenty-one days, I mean, so it's not, it is something that I think could be done.
I think it's worth exploring, I mean, if we want to actually try and capture some of the pop-up stuff, then that's fine. Um, I, you know, I, I think for the sake of anyone interested in doing it, I'd want to establish how long it would likely take them to get a health department permit. And part of the problem there is, uh, I don't know, I'm assuming that they have to inspect your vehicle before they're willing to give you the permit, and the closest official I can think of is in Springfield, so, um...
One would think, but...
Well, let me ask this, who else wants to do a second set of regulations for pop-up? The so-called pop-up people?
I think it's a good idea, I definitely think it's worth talking about or exploring more.
Or would it be easier to simply accept them from one or two of these?
To do what?
To accept them, to have an exception for something that's particularly offensive, um, say this, this thing doesn't apply for any mobile food unit that is, you know...
Well, the easier thing would be just to accept what we propose.
That's, that was my thought. And the big problem for you is the permit license, because that's gonna take time.
The business permit license.
Yes.
And what else?
Right.
You mean a, a business permit license, like from the secretary of state?
No, the town issues business permit licenses. I don't know what the turnaround time on those is either, I don't think it's...
I think it's just a registration and a payment, but I can understand if you're just here for a weekend or two, why would you, I don't know what the business permit license regs say.
And the zoning permit, right?
Yeah, exactly, one and four are sort of the big ones for me. There was something in here about getting permission from the owner.
We got rid of that, that's usually on the zoning permit.
One and four are the two big ones.
So what if we just had an exception?
Because the new language for three, I think, is pretty good.
I think thirty days is a little much, though, because you could conceivably do every weekend for an entire summer in thirty days. Well, not quite, but I was thinking more like seven or ten.
Does twenty work for you?
Well, I don't move by fiat yet.
Twenty and remove one and four, and you got a deal.
Twenty-one is the temporary signs.
Twenty-one is temporary signs.
Um...
Twenty-one days every six months.
Well, you know, I just don't think that this allows the fairness inherent with what the select board was asking us to do in terms of matching on private land what exists on public property. And therefore, we're setting up kind of differing standards, and what we've been asked to do is to be consistent.
Well, if they wanted that, why didn't they just move it themselves?
Because they asked it to be part of the zoning, and that's our responsibility.
Okay, well, we've got disagreement, the way to resolve it, I think, is to have a vote. And my suggestion to accommodate your suggestion, Jim, would be to say, instead of the operator in one and any operator in four, um, anyone operating for more than twenty-one days in a calendar year.
I'm good with that.
Um, so why don't we make the motion? I mean, if it passes, it passes, and if not...
Can I ask another question?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we'll discuss it all we want.
So, like, going back to the parking thing, not to dwell on this, but if something is zoned urban center, does that, let's say they're zoned urban center and they have nine parking spaces for whatever reason, it's because they've been there for fifty years, do they still have to go? And, I mean, how does that work if you're in a vacant parking lot or any one of those situations?
You're not required to have any parking spaces currently in urban center for a new application. So if you found yourself in a situation where you're in the urban center and you did have parking spaces, uh, you know, as, as, as long as it was safe, I don't see that being an obstacle.
The zoning officer would know that.
Right.
Can I ask a question on the same subject?
Hold on, wait, wait, I, I, I'm sorry, I just want to resolve this issue first, and my thought was then to go to the parking issue, so I don't want to end that discussion, I just want to, you know, if we're gonna decide, we're gonna go with Jim's idea, let's do it, if not, let's do that, but I don't want to get, go to another conversation before we at least settle that.
Okay.
Um, so Jim, you're moving to change fifty-one eighty-eight, so that sections one and four, instead of reading the operator and any operator, are anyone operating a mobile food unit for more than twenty-one days in a calendar year?
Yes.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay, so you say so moved, if that's correct?
So moved.
Okay, I'll give you a second, now this, we, we have another discussion opportunity right now.
Okay. Let's, let's say that somebody or other opens this fly-by-night food, that's, and that's its business name, and they locate on such and such a private property, and there's adequate parking and all that other, but they don't need a business permit license and they don't need adminis, yeah, a zoning permit, so...
Because they're twenty-one days or less, right?
Yes, so what if you either get sick or trip or whatever, and you want to go back to discuss that with them, but they're gone and you have no, you know, you don't know their name, you don't know their, their operating address, you don't have any piece of information there.
It's a fly-by-night food cart.
And that, and it, yeah, but that's all you know, like you saw it once, you were there for fifteen minutes, but you have no recourse because there's no paperwork on file.
You gotta have a health department...
Yeah, you gotta have a health department permit. Conceivably, the owner knows you were there, the owner of the property knows you were there, so the owner of the property...
But that's conceivably, and if you don't have a zoning permit, it's not a real...
Well, you're right, you are, yeah, I mean, you're correct. There, that possibility exists, and I think as human beings, we have to take some risks. One thing you should, we need to add on the so moved thing, though, was the removing it at the end of the day, because I think that's a good definition that helps to keep it really temporary.
That's what...
Sorry, I didn't mean to go back...
No, 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 but I just want to make sure we follow the rules here. So you're gonna withdraw your motion and make a new motion and include the language, any operator, anyone operating a mobile food unit?
I'm gonna need to play with it.
Yeah, why don't we let her play with it?
You want to let her play with it?
I think I'm gonna need to play with it, and we would need to re-warn anyway, because we're creating a new category than what was warned. And so, I'm not saying that it can't happen, I just, I think in order to figure out how it would look in the ordinance, it...
My goal is to avoid that.
There's no avoiding it, if we create a new category, I think it's substantial.
I don't think we are creating a new category.
Yeah, we are.
I think we're...
Yeah, you are. You have those less than twenty-one days and those more.
And you can't add that into here, because this is really for the thing that the select board is asking us to do, is for the semi, semi-permanence. I don't disagree with, in what sense with what you want to do, but I think it's a whole separate thing. And, and that we should handle this one that we've been given and then decide if we want to, um, add something else, we could even add it at the, at the public hearing if you want, I guess, I don't know if you can do that because it's been warned, but...
Well, let me ask you this, Jim, would you be content to vote on this language today with the understanding that the staff would come to us with language describing an exception for those there twenty-one days or less in a calendar year that we would vote on at the next publicly warned reading?
Um, so does that mean that basically this would go into play, and then in however many months or weeks it takes after this one goes into play, then the new one goes into play?
No. What, I'm just trying to be efficient.
Yeah, I honestly don't want to delay the process, so...
I'm not trying to do anything silly here, but my thought was, if we agree on the terms for semi-permanent vendors, we'll call them, um, then we vote that in, and if we disagree on the exception, my hope would be that Sue would be able to come up with language by next meeting. Would we go over warn by then?
Uh-uh.
Okay, two meetings?
It's a fifteen-day one.
Two meetings, huh?
Yep. Let me, let me actually just, before we go too much further down this track, and it's, this is not, I'm thinking, I'm thinking through this concept, and it occurs to me more than anything else, I actually don't know how the pop-up system really works. I mean, I've followed it with some interest, we've both followed it with quite a bit of interest in large cities like LA and other parts of the country, so we know they happen. We know that in some instances, like in parts of LA, they'll take over three parking spaces on a street, um, which clearly is public property, and they'll, you know, fence off the area with, with, you know, potted plants or something and serve people food, you know, in an outdoor setting for a month, and then vaporize, right? What I don't understand are all the issues that we raised here and how they actually play out, and I can't, I can't give you the definitive answers that you want, and I don't know what the implications of it are. I can imagine in a metropolitan atmosphere where they have their own health department, and they're issuing their, their own health departments, and you meet minimum requirements, and you come in, you could do the, you could do all the paperwork in one day, and then somebody would walk out to the area basically with you and say, okay, yeah, you're good to go. You paid your two hundred dollars, this is your permit, I'm gonna staple it to this tree, knock yourself out. Right? Um, that would be great, but I actually don't think that we have the jurisdictional independence that you're assuming that we do have, and so we'd always be in a setting where we have to go to the state. And so, I, I like the concept of the pop-up, I get it, I think it's interesting to explore, it would make quite a bit of difference to street life here under the right sorts of circumstances, I just don't know the entire regulatory framework of how it would come together. And, you know, um, that being said, it's not something, you know, something that I think is interesting to explore, but I think it is, in subject content, related but distinctly different enough from this to warrant its own investigation. Um, and, I mean, the only other thing I've identified about pop-ups is, um, that they're well-regarded local chefs that have got a reputation. And so it's, um, an exploration for them of, you know, different cuisine or, you know, so the, the, um, costs and, um, you know, the fixed, literally, it's the fixed things about a restaurant, about renovating a space, about getting an aesthetic that is appropriate, about getting all your permits in place permanently, about raising a large amount of capital to have a formal restaurant, is what they're trying to avoid, and they're not sure if they want to pursue some kind of weird mashup of different cuisines or something, and so they just want to try it for a month. And that it's kind of a fashionable thing to do, I get all that, I just don't know the logistics, I don't know the mech, the regulatory mechanisms for how they work in places like LA. Um, none of, the other observation about LA would be, it doesn't rain very much. So, um, so, um, I'm happy for us to explore that as a, as a planning commission project, if that's what you're asking us to do, but I would say at this point, for us to conclude the business that we've got before us now, um, it's enough different to make me want to deal with it differently.
What do you think, Jim?
You brought up a lot of other interesting points that I didn't even think of just by your explanation there, and...
Do you get the right to make a motion if you want to make a motion? My thought was...
I have no motions to make.
Okay, okay. And, um, but we have an understanding that the staff is gonna look into this and we'll revisit it at a later time at least.
Mm-hmm.
We can, so the process would be a public hearing on the twenty-fourth, then the planning commission would take a vote whether or not they're gonna send it to the select board, then they've got to warn a public hearing too, so we can be looking into that in the meantime.
That's one issue. Um, now, another issue is the parking. And let's, let's get back to that and see if we can resolve that, uh, whether through vote or agreement, I don't really care, but I think we should.
I just have a question on that.
Sure.
So in your, in your site A scenario...
Yep.
So, in, when someone sets up a business in a, in a plan, like whether it's site A or site B, are there requirements that say how many cars there have to be for everything, just like there are for, say, residential? So if site A happened to have only, in the regs, need nine spaces, but he happens to have fifteen, then you got, then those other ones that are above nine...
You've got six to play with, you can, you could do something else with them.
Okay, so that, so that exists...
Yes.
In some documentation somewhere else?
Yeah, you, yeah, so the site plan approval process takes the table that it can, exists in the zoning ordinance and says, for however many square feet, you need so many parking spaces. Sometimes it breaks...
So a convenience store of this many square feet might need this many parking spaces.
Yes.
And if he happens to have extra, then he happens to have extras, but there's what he needs.
And in the past, they... And in the past, they did have extras.
Yes, right. And what I'd say that's changed enormously, and it's still kind of patchy, is that sometimes you'll get applicants who insist that they want way more parking than the minimum required, and we are on the side of saying, no, 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 we don't want to give you more parking than the minimum required, because the minimum is very generous. And they're like, no, look, by the time I've got three staff, and this, and this, and this, and this, and this, I want 20. And we're going, you only need seven. And they're like, no, I want 20. And you're like, no, you only want seven. And so, we get that debate, and then the flip side is less common, but like, hey, I've got 30, and I'm only really using five, can I do something else? And we're like, hmm, let's have a look. And so, it critically depends on the site, but it's usually written down in the permit...
Based on the type of business, square foot.
How many, how many parking spaces were permitted, right?
Yep, got it.
Okay, I had a little sidebar with Liz here, and the, I, I just suggested to pare down her suggestion a little bit, so that it, 3A reads, as proposed, does not interfere with pedestrian or vehicular access, or conflict with the parking spaces associated with the principal use. Is that the okay staff, you think?
Seven.
Does not interfere with pedestrian or vehicular access, or conflict with the, with the parking spaces associated with the principal use.
I see adding or conflict.
Okay.
To try to make clear that if there are those extra spaces beyond the minimum...
Okay, yeah.
That those wouldn't be a conflict.
Right.
And it provides flexibility to the zoning administrator.
Administrator, right.
I mean, I think that's our intent, and all along, I just wanted to be clear so that...
So where does that, the word come in there, after parking spaces? Vehicular?
After, after vehicular access.
Yeah, I, I take out "to," the word "to," and insert "or conflict with the," and then parking spaces associated with the principal use.
Right.
Okay.
That's good.
But we still have Timberley's issue, I think, to address, I think.
Well, I mean, if it's, I, I was under the impression that if we had a site plan approval for X amount of spots, that that's how many spots there are. And if, if you only have five, or if there's 10 spots, and if you're only required to have five, you can take the extra five, in theory, and...
So, am I to understand we have consensus?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's two issues taken down. Accessory use is informative. The other thing, and we all agree on the special signs language, so the only question, I think, is number per parcel?
Mm-hmm.
Am I right?
Little chart, the little...
Okay, so how, yes, how do we feel about the little chart on the back of this? Limiting a smaller than one acre parcel to one, and a larger than one acre to two?
Possi, as possibilities, doesn't mean...
As possibilities, right.
Oh, yes, maximum number can be, yes.
I mean, it seems sensible to me. Does anybody think it's too restrictive, too liberal? Not sure.
Seems sensible to me as well.
That's two.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine, it seems sensible, I, I would, the reality of it might be different, but just theoretically, this, it sounds okay.
Jim, sorry, Jim Timberley? Skeptical over there.
I think of a lot as small.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I just, I, I feel like, I feel like it kind of, it doesn't allow for what Jim is saying, that what, we're, we're preparing for things that may or may not happen with, with purely good intentions. I feel like we're kind of limiting ourselves, though, in some senses, with less than one acre, two food carts. I just, I, I feel like other things would happen if there wasn't that restriction, but I don't know, really haven't...
Imagine like a food cart night kind of thing?
Yeah, and what if I want to have a lemonade stand and sell through cocktails?
They do that in Burlington, actually, Food Cart Fridays.
I think lemonade stands are exempted, but I, your point is, I'll take it.
Is it on streets, though?
I don't know. Someone just, I, I, someone just wrote me and told me to hate it.
It might be on that pedestrian walkway thing that they have there, which is pretty cool.
Yeah, I don't know where it is.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Well, I mean, is it possible that this is redundant, and all our other regulations could cover it because they would keep the parking restrictions fairly tight?
Yeah, I mean, do, do we need it at all?
And the reality might be that it would functionally limit smaller parcels probably to one or two, but if there was an old parking lot somewhere being unused...
Wasn't this just kind of background for Timberley, because the regulation itself was silent, but we just wanted to know more background?
No, we were, we were proposing this change, but I think my initial reaction is, that's kind of interesting, it is kind of self-limiting.
I was thinking, if you had an old parking lot that was large, you could conceivably, easily do multiple food carts on a night, if you really coordinated it, it would be something I think many would think was good. Be very hard to find the right site, and you probably could never have two on the semi-permanent parcels that we've identified as concerning.
Right.
I think that's where the, the zoning, the parking space requirement comes in, I mean, that actually works out kind of well, because if you're in urban center and you don't have, if you don't need, or the, those spots aren't required, then now, all of a sudden, you know, in the places where people are walking around and not having to drive and park and all that stuff, sort of allowing for that to happen in places that are more pedestrian-oriented already.
And if there were to be some large, say, shopping center that went out of business on Putney Road, it might help.
I, I eat home depot.
Well...
No names.
Yeah, but I, I, I was thinking about how before Peoples came in, they used to use that parking lot for cruise nights on...
They still do.
Oh, they still do.
They're my temporary sign.
Wow, I can't believe I never go by there in front of her.
You should call every summer.
Yeah.
I spend, I spend too much time at home, but I, I, I just think that the regulations are maybe restrictive enough as we have them, but I don't know, I'm not the planning expert.
What I'd say is, if you're going for the semi-permanent look, which is sort of what this is intended to address, and how this whole thing came about, really, that I don't think there's too much harm to be had by actually specifying in a table the ratio between area and the number of mobile food units that you can allow for. I think each one of the examples that you've come up with, and I, you know, this makes more sense, given the realization that in the urban center, there's no parking requirements, so you could load a fairly small site, like a quarter of an acre or even less, with arguably, you know, more, more mobile food carts than otherwise. I think what we're doing is sort of slipping between the every-now-and-again notion, so to take the, the cruise night example, say, somebody wants to turn up and sell, you know, hot dogs out of a van while that's happening, and then they go away.
Mm-hmm.
That's different from somebody who's planning to permanently locate a hot dog stand in the corner of that parking lot every day and every night, all summer long, right? And the implications are different, as well as the, the requirements, I guess. So, I think we're just, there's some slippage there, I...
Might the, might the logical way to accommodate both concerns be to impose a limitation on small areas, such as under one acre, but not to limit larger areas? So then you would avoid urban center congestion, I mean, I don't think there's any one acre lots in the urban center, if there is, it's in a weird space like near Sosa, or the Kiln Dry, maybe, so away from people.
Right.
And then you could achieve end number one, while also not necessarily blocking end number two, which was what I'm thinking of, is the so-called cart night idea.
I will counter my argument real quick, just to, and I, I say this, because I was, when I was reading some of the other cities around the country that are having the same problems, I think the Sacramento there, they ran into, if you have all these carts, then what about the businesses that exist and have higher overheads?
Right.
Yeah, that's pretty, I noticed that that was pretty prevalent, and a lot of cities had, you know, you couldn't locate within 100, 150 from a restaurant.
Right. I think, I think, to be honest, yeah, I think we're walking a fine line here, and it wouldn't take very long for us to actually encounter requests of the select board to address either problem that you just identified, that, you know, certain, you know, and that, that gets back to the whole semi-permanent versus...
Yeah.
Pop-up thing. No one's gonna get offended if this person's here for a month and vaporizes, and it brings activity to the street and all that kind of stuff, and there's no real negative, long-term implications from that. But if what, if what becomes apparent is that people are sort of getting under the regulatory fence, then, you know, and your body, your, your business is pretty modest, so if you're making sandwiches, or hot dogs, or whatever, and you paying rent and insurance on a fixed address, you are ultimately gonna be at a disadvantage if somebody can just, you know, screech door, hold out the front, and do the same thing. So, I don't think we've encountered that kind of feedback yet, but I...
But it is very difficult to operate a restaurant, and I think that they have short seasons as well, just...
I think their business is extremely seasonal, and, you know...
Well, it's not our job to protect one type of a business over another type.
No, but I think the political reality is, is that we will encounter, you know, or, you know, we need to be, we need to be aware of the politics of the situation, I guess, of course.
Okay, well...
You know, not trying to come up with a list of favorites or anything.
Right, of course.
Okay, so, does, does anybody feel strongly enough to make either a motion to get rid of the limits, or to get limit, get rid of the limit on units on a larger-than-one-acre parcel?
I don't know, should there be limits?
I personally, I think the larger-than-one-acre parcel, I mean, I don't think the limit is gonna be this terribly crippling thing, but I, I, God, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I had a nice time in New York City at this place near the, the High Line Park, where underneath they, 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 there was just this...
The beer garden?
There was a beer garden, and, I mean, of course, I didn't partake, but...
Yeah, that's right, of course. You just observed, yeah.
I didn't swallow, I just shipped, I didn't swallow.
There's a big old piece of asphalt.
Gurgles, gurgles.
Big old piece of asphalt, and that's what they did with it, they put like five food carts and a bunch of picnic tables in the middle of it.
York City's...
And I'm sure the local restaurant owners were apoplectic when they did that.
Unless one of the food carts was theirs, which is perfectly within their capacity, right? So, yeah.
But, I mean, it seemed cool, so if someone felt strong, I, I don't feel strongly enough to make the motion, but if someone wanted to get rid of the plus-one-acre limit, I'd probably vote for it. So, that's one vote, that's what I think, I'm just one guy.
There's time to think about this, too, because while you're making changes, I mean, we still have to do this after the public hearing formally.
Sure.
Right.
But, so, any motions? Go in once.
Motion to what? Leave it in or check it out? Is it in?
Well, it's up to you.
Everything's in right now. I, I'm, I'm simply saying I don't feel strongly enough to make a motion about the larger-than-one-acre parcel limit, but I'd probably vote to get rid of that limit.
So do you think the less-than-one acre at one is appropriate?
I think that's reasonable to reduce the congestion in the urban center or similar areas. I understand the argument the players make.
I think it's only with one congestion, I just worry about the other restaurants around.
I mean, your point is well-taken about density, you know, and that sort of thing, but I can see it being kind of a pain if...
Well, also, good, good restaurants bring good restaurants, I mean, there's this sort of, you never, you don't, it's hard to predict how those things are gonna play out. You know, a couple of good things brings more people into town, which is more business for some of the restaurants, we don't know how that would play itself out.
I'd say, if we could do less than one acre and limit that to one, and then do the 21-day thing, I mean, that's, it seems more intriguing, and more, I don't know, more possibilities involved with something like that than having like eight food carts in the middle of a parking lot all summer long, and then nobody can afford, you know, Amy's Bakery can't afford to stay open, because they're...
I don't see too many mobile, well, you know, yeah.
I know, we just don't, I mean, right in town, we just don't have all that much space anyhow, because Harmony, Harmony is owned by the town, so most of, most Harmony's, most Harmony's public, right? So, I mean, other than behind like TJ Buckley's and the Co-op, we don't have that much space that's not public. We got a few other parking lots, but really not that much.
Yeah, I don't see the Co-op allowing a food cart in the corner of their lot somehow.
Okay, well, if you don't want it, make a motion to get it out of there.
I don't know.
Okay.
Can we, can we think about that?
Sure, okay, that's fine, too. When do we have to make the decision?
We'll discuss it again after the...
After the public hearing is held.
Okay. Okay, so with that, we've resolved two of the three issues, correct, everybody? Okay, well, that's pretty good, I mean, 66% make you the greatest hitter in baseball history, so...
In an hour.
Yeah, we doubled our...
It's very much like baseball, and there we go.
We were going, we were, you know, we were going efficiently through our first section, so I think we're still sort of on track. Let's talk about subdivision regulations.
Long on it.
Oh, so wait, we're not gonna vote on that?
Nobody made any motions. Can't vote if you don't have a motion.
So what happens to it if we don't vote?
It just goes, it goes forward like this.
On the entire thing?
Yeah.
So, what's gonna happen is, we are taking the one, this is what got warned.
Yep.
Oh, this is the wrong one.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's the right one, but I, I printed off the wrong copy, it's the right language. This is the language that's going to public hearing on the 24th, so we can public in, hopefully have a fun, and get some comments. After that, we'll discuss it again, and decide if we're gonna tweak it. If there are minor tweaks, we can then still send it over to the select board, if there are major tweaks, then we would have to have another hearing.
We have to replace the sign, the new sign.
So, so anything we do tonight is really just kind of, hoping, I guess, my guess is James is trying to get everybody on the same page after the hearings.
Yeah, either get everybody on the same page, or figure out where we're not, so we can just have a vote. If we're gonna disagree, we should disagree efficiently.
Okay, so if we're doing that, then I'm, I still would like to take one and four to the less-than-21-days drive away, but I know there's a problem with that, because we just can't do that in a, in an efficient, in the timeframe that we have, right, Rod?
Right.
So if we don't have that timeframe, I mean, that's a problem for me, anyway, I'm only one dude, so we'll do it.
We're all only one dude. So what's the best way to address that? We don't want to hold up the whole regulations, right?
No.
Okay. I mean, if we could commit to Jim, then we'll consider it, after we consider these regulations, I think that's a fair thing to do.
Yeah, I would like, I would like to go to LA and study the problem in person.
I'm sure, I'm sure the town people put that in their budget.
I'm the chair, they're the staff, if we're both willing to make that commitment, would you be willing to go forward so we can deal with the semi-permanent?
We'll go with it.
I can look at some stuff and bring it for the 24th.
Yeah, I mean, I would feel good if we had something at the 24th that we could also have the public be able to participate in, so that we're not just looking at one thing. If we even had that, that would, that would make it happier.
I mean, I think the interesting, the interesting thing, he, yeah, I mean, there's just lots of different attributes, and I...
I totally get it.
For me, like, I don't even, I don't know the requirements of the business permit license, it's not our department, so I don't know that we can write zoning that would waive it for anybody, you know, I just need to re, do some research, and I'm not sure when it's required. Maybe if it's somebody that's here 21 days.
So who is that? What, what...
That's the town manager's office. So, the, the issue that has occurred to me is, I'm trying to think of the appropriate language here, because I think it's kind of quaint and weird. Some towns on the, on the, literally on the town boundary, this is more like an upstate New York thing, so you'll be familiar with this, Jim. You know, you're driving along, you're depressed in expectation of hitting Troy pretty soon, and you'll see a sign that says something like zoning ordinance enforced, to warn you that you're about to enter somewhere with real rules. And then you go around another bend, and then it's more junk cars in the yard, and then you come up another sign, and it'll say, solicitors, or something, must register at the town hall, or something, right?
Yeah.
And where I'm from, a solicitor is actually an attorney. I know that there's another form of soliciting that is a little more ancient than that. Tends to happen at night more than the daytime. And then, yet, this means, I, as far as I understand it, this is like a traveling salesperson, like somebody with a suitcase full of pots and pans, who's just gonna knock on everyone's door and say, do you wanna buy some pots and pans? And they're soliciting for a sale. So, my understanding is that that requires a permit. So, if somebody, you know, if you go and knock on somebody's door and try and sell pots and pans and you don't have a license to do it in that town. And so, they had that here too. So, what I'm getting at is, I don't think you can do anything for very long around here and take money without actually having a business permit. And I don't know how long it takes you to get one of those. I don't think you can do it over your cellphone.
Yeah.
I think, but I'm not, I mean, I say, and I'm not joking, I, I say that, but I think actually, if you could access, if you could ask, access the town website with your iPad or your smartphone, you may be able to get one. I'm not, I'm s- Yeah, I think you gotta resubmit it, and then I don't know how.
You submit and pay the fee, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Is that it?
Okay, well.
No, I think it has to be sent back to you. I think you get something.
Anyhow, I think, I think we've come to enough of a.
You'll get the info. We'll, we'll have a vote on it at some point, and if it's the board's inclination, then we will follow your advice. If not, we won't. But I, I'm conscious we've got 60 minutes for subdivision. I don't wanna keep us all here for too long. And I think we made some good progress here.
Okay.
So, let's talk about building envelopes and lot size, if anybody remembers that stuff.
I need to refresh my memories.
I don't think we need 60 minutes.
Oh, I don't expect that we do, but I just, I just don't, I mean, if we, if we talk about food carts for too much longer, I have a feeling we're all just gonna wanna go home when we're done talking.
Actually, I wanna go to a food cart right now.
I'd, I'd like a really nice.
So, let's. Let's take a couple slides of our subdivision issues. Staff?
So, back in April, we had a good, a lengthy conversation about building envelopes and clearing, you know, whether it was going to also be the limits of clearing. So, I did a bunch of research. Rod and I had a lot of discussions. And I think basically our recommendation is to not have the building envelope be the limit of clearing.
It's all right, James. What's all about you to know?
So, I looked at some, you know, what I boiled it down to is we were trying to deal with clearing based on erosion and sedimentation. And kind of go with a blanket approach. But there's lots of reasons you would limit clearing. It could be tree retention, it could be erosion and sedimentation. So, then I started thinking, well, if we're gonna do erosion, if, if our concern is stated in the town plan is erosion and sedimentation, is that the best way to do it? And to me, it's more of looking at the steep slopes, designating those areas and then putting limits on the steep slope areas.
And I understand clear on steep, steep slopes is a bad idea.
That's good.
Yes.
We also.
I have my limits, but the simple stuff I can get there.
We also did some calculations based on some developments that we know. I mean, people, it's expensive to clear. People really aren't clearing much more than an acre or two, which is kind of what we've said would be the limit of the building envelope. So, it's kind of was one of those situations where maybe it's too much right now. And there's a bit more effective way to deal with erosion and sedimentation. I feel like if we're gonna put limits on clearing, we need to understand more about the unique values of some of the forested areas in order to make that argument better. Our town plan addresses the erosion and sedimentation.
And, you know.
And we still wanna look at that in the zoning under steep slopes.
Sure.
And, and by designating a building envelope to begin with, we've basically said, you can't build in those steep slope areas, so.
We've already addressed that on some level.
Right.
I mean, I guess when, you know, in the late eighteen, if you were to see photos of this area, you know, in the late eighteen hundreds into the early nineteen hundreds, there wasn't.
It was clear.
It was, it was nicely done, comprehensively cleared. And there were sheep everywhere keeping the grass down. So, you know, the ecological impact of that era is still playing out. Is one way of thinking about that. And, you know, most of the, well, almost entirely the forest is second or third growth at least. Sometimes even younger, fourth growth. So, there's that issue, and that's sort of set up the sort of, you know, if you like, the sort of underlying base for what we're dealing with now. The other part about it is, is that I think that the state and the plan itself, the town plan itself recognizes the virtue of an agricultural working landscape. Not all clearing falls into the category of clearing of agricultural land. I, I guess our preference would be, you know, people forming meadows or something similar. Will be made, motivated to do that because they'd be placing land into, you know, active agricultural use perhaps as part of this, as part of a rural or rural residential subdivision. There are other ecological goals that you might wanting to be pursuing. So, you could, for instance, wanna actually open up a meadow partly to improve the wildlife conditions and the health of the forest deeper in. There actually are some grounds for wanting to actually clear. I guess, once we work through all our separate issues, I think we came to the conclusion that by designating a building envelope, what we'd hope to do is be able to have the applicant demonstrate that it's not in conflict with, in particular, steep slopes or some other kind of identified ecological value, which could include wildlife corridors. If we have that data layer and it's dependable enough. So, yeah, we're over it.
Is that all we need to talk about with respect to building envelopes? And does anybody here have any disagreements with that?
That being said, you will see building, I mean, we still do think that it's important to establish building envelopes, and that would basically, you know, cover the primary building and the.
Accessories.
Accessory buildings, accessory structures.
We don't have to make those decisions tonight.
No.
No.
No, it was just, it was a, yeah.
Two, two, I, there was just only one and two under that.
Yeah.
Establishment of building envelopes.
Yeah. And so, what, what we do, well, that had said, I mean, this, you have to go back to your packet from
April.
April 22nd. But basically, it says that, at that point, it said, "Building envelopes and/or areas of contiguous clearing shall generally be limited to a maximum of a half an acre for an individual building or up to two acres for multiple buildings." Went on a common lot. I still think a half an acre is appropriate to designate for the primary and accessory structures, but now we're getting rid of clearing, so you could conceivably clear areas.
And then the steep slopes, that's why, is that when the clearing of less than that, but, okay, so somebody clears a bunch of, a bunch of land and, you know, there are people at the bottom of the hill. Is that addressed in steep slopes or is that?
That's what we would have to address in zoning, yeah.
Right.
In the steep slope zoning.
So.
The plan was anything over 15 degrees?
I, we hadn't, I think the plan talks about over 25% of steep slope. Over 15%.
It's quite steep.
Yeah, so there, I'm sorry, there would be no clearing on 25. There would be some review at 15.
15, 15, yeah.
Okay.
What if somebody wanted to clear and regrade so it was less than?
We're trying not to grade.
Yeah, we would wanna, right.
It would be that kind of thing that would be subject to review because.
And this will be one of the next things we deal with after we're able to conquer subdivisions, if we're able to, without town building burning down and planning commissioned.
You know, we, we've received some comment that 15 is perfectly doable and is referenced to a slope that is, is steep enough such that the, you could have a walkout basement on the first floor. You know, work, walkout basement and the first living floor above it, and that the land would be on an angle such that, you know, you'd be at grade coming off the first floor.
Well, we can save this for debate and then get someone from A and R to come down and talk to us, right?
I don't know if we necessarily need to go as far as A and R.
Or some scholarly thing that tells us.
Yeah, yeah. Agency of Natural Resources.
I think I just said national resources.
Right. Yeah, so that's, that's not a, I mean, what we'd say around control and 15% is that we wanna review for that. Given that we're dealing mostly with residential development, or we are dealing with residential development here, that would be new to the extent that we would be reviewing one and two family dwellings uh, this way, whereas typically we don't review with any strict measures on, on one and two family dwellings.
Right, but we're gonna save this because we wanted to apply to all zoning districts. Are you content with that concept? Yeah, okay. So, let's talk about lot size.
Way back in April, we had the conversation about exploring different ways of, you know, of the minimum lot size and how many lots you could get. So, I had told you that there were a couple methods out here, out there. So, I sent you this feature-based density, which you probably, if you read, you had to reread and reread and reread. And if you've been rereading it since April, your head still might be spinning. And then I also sent you, cause this model that is out of a New Hampshire publication was based on, I can't remember Vermont firm's work.
Norwich.
Norwich, it was burnt rock or. It was burnt rock. Norwich, Vermont actually uses this. I haven't had a chance to speak to their planner, but basically, in their rural district, they have no minimum lot size. And so, when it comes to subdivision, they have a process that you go through. So, you need to darn, I didn't bring it heavy, because I did it back in April, I think it's been sitting aside. So, right now, our zoning is based on our density, we define in terms of a minimum lot size, so you have to have three acres or one and a half acres. That then establishes the density kind of for the entire area, or the entire zone. When you start looking at feature-based density, you wanna throw out that concept of minimum lot size or, you know, you need so many acres in order to develop. And then you're determining the density not on the entire district, but on the parcel. And so, in order to do that, you start with the regular, the parcel of land. So, say it's 20 acres. And then you're gonna subtract out the areas that we deem not to be the develop, developable. So, those are your steep slopes, your wetlands.
So, the difference between.
Flood plain.
Yeah, so the difference is there is between theoretical yield and actual yield.
And I had to put all these definitions on the page. I should get them. I can go get them.
I'm following along as you explain it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you're gonna detract out, you're gonna take out the areas that are not developable and say, on a 20-acre parcel, maybe that leaves you with 15 acres now that is developable. And from there, you're gonna start determining the density that's available off of that.
And this is what we've talked about many meetings ago.
Yeah.
How to come up with proper way to have the appropriate yield.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then from here, yeah, so you've determined your developable area, and then you're gonna start looking at what the development density is gonna be for those remaining 15. Again, keep out any, you need one and a half acres or whatever per lot, per, um, structure or whatever. Excuse me while I fumble through this. It's been a long day. So, then you start in, you start bumping up the density based on the features of the parcels. So, in this example, and I think in Norwich they use it too, it can be the type of road that it's on. So, if it's a class three paved road, you, maybe you get two ton, you know, two more units.
Right.
You have to set a base.
I'm saying, this would not just be for conservation subdivisions, this would be for all, right?
This would be for, for anything in the rural and the rural residential. Everything else would go by the minimum lot size, be prescribed.
Right.
So, if we applied that scheme, what would happen to conservation subdivisions?
I've been struggling with this a little bit myself, because I'm actually think this gets us.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like the universal solution.
Which is why I think that this is being done in Vermont and you don't see very many conservation subdivisions. Because this allows the flexibility. So, you, you'll come up with a number of units based on the features. And then you can cluster them anyway, because there's no minimum lot size. That's the nice part. So, maybe in this 15 acres that are left, you can get seven units.
Right.
And therefore, you can do it any way you want. They could be.
You can cluster them all, you, you can cluster them all on three acres. You could sprinkle them across the 15.
And you could still have the bonuses if you're doing.
You could, you could introduce bonuses if they're gonna.
Right, which is effectively why, if you look at page 40 and 41 of this handout from New Hampshire, these, these lengthy tables, which are, in the second one, I should say, table 1.3.2, looks like it's drawn from Norwich straight off the bat. I think they both are, but so.
They reference Norwich.
Right. So, this is how they're gonna award, if you like, the bonuses. So, if you were to take, by, by arriving at your actual yield, you've excluded deer wintering yards and, and all, all the, all the things they list here in table 1.3.1. Then, you could, you could basically argue that they're giving you a density bonus if you, if you count all these exclusions.
Right. This seems like a great idea.
It's difficult to explain.
It avoids this huge pitfall. I worry about, you know, Joe Schmo who just wants to divide his single lot into, you know, a big lot and a small lot.
It's just like a two-step process.
It is, it's a two-step. I mean, it's actually not that difficult.
Who does the steps? Joe Schmo?
The applicant could. We have lots of data. I mean, there's the biofondary, which provides good data on slopes and, you know, wetlands are pretty well-mapped and.
Right.
If you had someone who was really limited, say they inherited a piece of property. You know, didn't have the money to hire a lawyer, didn't have the money to keep the property, wanted to subdivide a piece out.
We could look at the family lot split, which was talked about during the EPA workshop, and their consultant actually sent me a couple of models of that. So, that could be the simple, yeah, one, one lot off in five years or something.
And then you prevent it from selling something else for a certain period of time. It could be five, 10 years, whatever.
Without going.
Without going through a formal subdivision process.
I, as I was talking about.
Yeah, I was actually interested about your example there, James. You're saying.
Well, the, um, the, the nice thing is you remove two systems and combine them. You remove a political hurdle, which is the minimum lot size that we know that the public and maybe members of the select board don't like. I only worry about the complexity.
Of explaining how to do this? Yeah.
I think we can get there.
Sometimes you say to yourself, why can't I just pay, you know, X percentage? Why do I have to deal with all these stupid?
I think that we can get there. I think we actually wanna model it out.
Yeah.
A little bit, so that we can take a look at that 20-acre parcel in the rural residential, which right now is three-acre zoning. So, that person can, they're gonna go into it thinking they get nine units. We wanna see actually where do they get to
Right.
when we've gone through.
I think even simple building codes, code stuff is pretty complex for anybody, you know, if you're gonna be selling property. Yeah, for Joe Schmo, it can be complicated, man.
What's that phrase about?
So.
Do you have yourself?
You know, you're gonna have to hire someone anyhow, probably.
A lawyer who represents himself as a fool for a client.
Yeah.
Which is true.
Kinda like that. One of the things.
Joe Schmo will have to sell an extra 500 feet to pay for the attorney.
Yeah, right.
I think that, you know, if you look at this model in New Hampshire and even Norwich, they actually give, you know, either a penalty or a bonus based on its distance from the town center or something like that. I mean, I think that that is not something that.
I don't think.
I love the idea, and I think I remember this family thing from our presentation, and I liked it, and I think that's the way to go.
Right.
Can we?
Right.
Can we sort of craft, sort of draft language that we can sort of talk about?
In July, because the June meeting...
Yes, that's what we've done now.
I mean, really, if, if we could get it to a final enough point where we have some consensus and we can give the, the run-through.
Mm-hmm. When we say we would like to model it, I, I think what we want to do is literally look at the map and go, okay, you know, this three-acre parcel...
Oh, yeah.
You, what would, what would really happen here?
Yes.
What, and what are the chances? And if we keep on encountering kind of unintended consequences or bad outcomes, then I think we'd have to get back to it on some level. But I think in theory, leaving aside the complexity of the road classification, I get why Norwich is doing it. I actually think it's a very good idea.
Uh-huh.
I actually think it's an extremely good idea, because it actually unifies a whole lot of things, nonetheless of which is...
It all looks very complex, complex.
Yeah, but we've been...
It's just what we're looking for, and it's great.
Yeah, this is great.
The, the road, the, the road, the road classification gets at the issue of, I, I think their advantage is Norwich is a really nice, compact village, and then you have these, one, it's very small, and, um, the elementary school is there, and the town hall is there, and the library's there, it's all right there.
Yeah, yeah.
And so radiating out from that central point are a series of roads that, as you go further, sort of diminish, you know, get, get smaller and smaller and smaller, and more and more dirt, um, until it's just not there.
If the road thing is a problem, we can get rid of that. The system still sounds great.
I actually think the road thing is good.
It's good.
I'm not saying we should. I'm just saying if we run into something that keeps on creating these collateral disasters, you know, get rid of it.
I mean, so, so if you go back to the town plan, we talked at length about the impact on emergency services and the cost of the budget for public works and so forth and so on, of having these long, low-density roads to maintain and to service and to, and to maintain access to. And so the way to actually cluster development closer to Route 9 is the major east-west corridor would be to actually introduce something like this.
Yeah.
The downside is, for us, regrettably, is that Route 9 itself is extremely vulnerable, and that doesn't sort of make a whole lot of sense, so...
It follows the flood.
Because it's in the flood plain itself.
Yeah.
So there's these weird phenomena, you know, and we're already a sort of a stretched-out enough community where I don't want to be sort of endlessly arguing a point about somebody who's coming down from Black Mountain Road, and, you know, you could just get into, Norwich is so simple, you know, to measure this sort of stuff, it makes, it's really nicely clean. I, I think we have challenges, for instance, comparing somebody on the very end of Guilford Street extension, just before the Guilford boundary, and comparing their impact, say, with somebody proposing something at the very end of Black Mountain Road, almost to Dumstun, and kind of trying to weigh those things. I just don't know if we...
Or way up Pleasant Valley Road or something like that.
Yeah, exactly. I just don't think that they necessarily boil down to the same thing, so, and I've got no idea what the distances from here are for all of us, right? So I just, I'm a little hesitant to, to get into that. The road classification, if we could make it very simple, and just talk about class...
Yeah, I, I see it as the...
Class three roads, you know, if you're on a class three, or even was a class four, you know, that's a drag to get, that's hard to get to, um, for emergency services. If you're on a class two or, you know, one is pretty big, but if you're a class two, you're okay, I think. I think, is that where you draw the line? Class three?
Class three, yeah. Class four is probably not.
I mean, class four could be unmaintained theoretically.
Yeah, class four is...
Yeah, you're gonna love this, the bridges are maintained, but the road is not.
Yeah.
So the plow stays like...
Some roads have...
The plow doesn't go there.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like a valid public interest.
A class three is that.
I mean, you might have the incentive, though, for a property owner to try to convince the town, "I'll upgrade the road if you change it to a class three," which would be kind of cool.
Yeah, it's big bucks.
It's not unheard of.
Yeah.
People are, they're, yeah, I can think of one road where...
I can think of a road where they...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They were looking for an upgrade and...
Well, money talks.
I think that there are some objectives, I guess, from the conservation subdivision that I would want to bring in and incentivize, like, I don't, I think if you're gonna just chop it up along the straight front edge, that's, we don't really want to...
Counterproductive.
Yeah, so I think that we'd want an incentive, maybe more units if you're gonna create a new road or driveway or something.
Right.
I mean, I think this is great, and I've been vocal about it, but does anybody think this is like not great, or maybe not the road we should be going down? Not to talk too much about roads, but I like it.
Now that I hear a little bit more about it, I mean, just trying to go through this, it's like, yai, 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 but...
I think you have to see it.
See, so your, your presentation is much more digestible than this.
Play it out by an example.
Yeah, I think the two examples together, like hearings who talk about how the two come together...
Yeah.
...made it much more understandable than trying to read each of them abstract, because you could see, you can see now how one informs the other.
Yeah.
And they answer the question that we had so many months ago about how to get the, an accurate parcel size.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think so, too, because you get the objective of the clustering, and so, you know, there was the debate about 10 acres, well, that could be a different type of sprawl and stuff, and this.
But it's also nice to have incentives, so I'm in favor of exploring incentives as well.
It's great, you know, it's innovative, it allows flexibility for someone to do with what, their own parcel, what they want. I think it addresses a lot of our concerns, and a lot of the discussions we've already had can inform you guys as you do the bonus system and that sort of thing.
Right.
So we have no disagreement. Let's push your canoe into the pond of...
All right.
It'll be July, the first meeting in July.
Okay.
July 1st. No, sorry, July 8th.